Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th order, suspend provision law and Governor's March 15th order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place due to the outbreak of the coronavirus. This meeting of the Town of Berlin Board of Selectmen will be conducted by a remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time. The Town of Berlin will use best efforts to post an audio or video recording transcript or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting on the town's webpage, the town's YouTube channel. Approved minutes will be posted to mytowngovernment.org. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to attend the virtual meeting may attend via the Zoom webinar platform in one of two ways, with both audio and video access or by telephone audio only. Should any board member have technical difficulties and/or lose access to the meeting, the meeting will recess for a period of time to see whether access can be restored. If not, the meeting will be continued to another date agreed to by a majority of the board or adjourned until our next scheduled meeting. Call the meeting to order at 7:04. And we have approval of the minutes. A vote to revise October 7th, 2019, open session minutes. Might as well do that one first, or do we want to do them at the same time?
Do them at the same times.
I don't know. I wasn't there at the October meeting. I don't know if I feel comfortable voting in favor of minutes instead of a meeting I wasn't at.
Okay, so why don't we just do the first one, October 7th?
August 31st. Oh, I'm sorry. You want to do?
October 7th first. And I don't know if we need to go over the revision or not. The revision looked fine to me. Do you, do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve the revised minutes of October 7th, 2019.
Okay, and I will second it. I think you can. Scott, okay, so I would say Keith, I.
Stoneeye.
Hawkins abstains.
Okay. And we also have the August 31st open session minutes. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve August 31st, 2020 minutes.
A second.
Okay, we'll take a vote unless someone has anything to. Comments, questions? Okay, we'll take a vote. Keith, I.
Stoneeye.
Hawkins, I.
Okay, both are unanimous. Margaret, do we have any correspondence?
There is no correspondence received for tonight.
Okay. And is there any general public comment?
No one there. Move on.
Five, I thought, well, there must be some attendees, but that's us.
That's all us.
All right. And we were going to have our police chief come and speak to us. It's 7:10, but I don't believe he's available. Am I right?
That is correct. He had an emergency.
Okay. Then we'll move on to your town administrator report, Margaret.
Okay. Thank you. Just to touch on, I want to just give a quick update on the Highland Commons liquor license, the amendments. The applicant has been advised that the applicant must make all changes to the application materials that the town cannot and will not do that for them. We also don't have an update yet from the building commissioner's office as to their receipt of the most up-to-date plan, so we're waiting to hear from Richard on that. All right, so I'm going to just touch on a couple of the bigger items, I guess, this week. First of all, the annual performance appraisal process, which has begun. I am requesting that board members provide a summary feedback, a couple of sentences by September 14th, if you so choose, for the department heads, for the department in positions that the board appoints. So I will consider that in the, in the comments and discussion with department heads. Benefits consultant. So I did forward the proposal, the benefits proposal. I have read through the entire thing. I feel that it's a very, very strong proposal, partly because this is a, this is a consultant that has significant municipal health benefits experience. And we know that that's a bit of a different animal. Cook &amp; Company, who submitted the proposal, currently works with about 47 mass municipalities. Dennis and Dennis, the treasurer, and I are meeting with representatives of Cook &amp; Company tomorrow to have a preliminary interview with them. And I would like to bring them back for an introduction to the board and a contract award recommendation on September 21st. Please take time to read through that and let me know if you have any questions that you'd like me to pass along to the, to the consultant. I'm happy to do that. Updates on the tax classification hearing. The tax classification hearing has been posted in the newspaper for September 21st. And as I said at the board's last meeting, the hearing may need to be continued if it's necessary based on delays in DOR approvals. We do need those in order to conduct the hearing, so we, I'll keep you posted every step of the way on that. But the administrative finance team met last week. We went through all the target calendar dates. We still are on track for the tax bill mailing in mid-October and the tax bills due in mid-November. Again, this is a month ahead of last year's process. The library septic, regrettably, I had to reject the two submitted bids in the public's interest according to General Law, Chapter 30, Section 39m. And that was, the reason for that is because the itemized list of services and materials that was to be included in the sale bids wasn't provided by either contractor. So I have rejected both bids and I've sent to the board a proposed timeline to get this out again. I'm still waiting to hear back from the Board of Health as to the feasibility of that timeline. This new timeline for bid and completion of construction would end in December now, rather than at the end of October. So I plan on reissuing the bids next Wednesday, September 16th, so we're going to move on this as quickly as possible. I have issued the notice to proceed with the structural survey on the Bullard House. And I have, oh, and I do have to ask board members to confirm their availability for a site visit at the Bullard House on Wednesday, September 16th, at 12:00 noon. Is that okay for all of you?
You guys, you guys can proceed without me. I'm an, I'm out of, I'm out of town all of next week. So I'll find another time to tour the house.
That means Scott, you get all the action items for next week, just saying.
You want to wait a week?
Wedding would be great for me.
It doesn't matter to me.
I'm good. I mean, if, I'd rather have the three of us go.
The week of the 21st, I have not committed to any day to be in the office so that I can now schedule any of those around anything we do at the Bullard House.
If you guys can pick a date tonight that works for overview, I know it's tricky, but then Historical can just work around to you all. It's really for you.
About Monday, the 20, Monday, the 21st?
Sure, Monday, 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 the 21st at 12:00 noon. Sure, putting on my calendar now.
Okay.
Me too.
I'm gonna, I'll post that and share that with Historical.
Okay, all right, good. That's all done.
Thank you, folks.
All right. Regarding COVID-19 safety protocols, I have contacted Board of Health to inquire about the possibility of reopening town offices for regular daily business transactions without requiring appointments. This is entirely dependent on the town's receipt of disinfecting sprayers. You recall, a couple of months ago, it was an issue. They were backlogged. They're still backlogged, but we do expect some disinfecting sprayers to come in this month. At which time I'll, I'll ask again if, if it seems feasible to do that. There's not, there's not a line of traffic at the door and you know, we can certainly put protocols in place to allow business transactions without prior appointment. I had a, we held a monthly department heads meeting today and went over a number of different items of COVID, performance appraisals. The FY22 capital planning process, which I did not, I neglected to include it in my written report tonight, but that has started. The capital planning process has begun. And the deadline to submit completed capital request forms, written estimates, and all written backup is Monday, November 2nd, and that goes to the Capital Planning Committee for their initial review. I will, I will also share it with the board and the finance committee. I let the department heads, we talked about the draft budget calendar guide and the fact that we're trying to move the process up a bottom month to give the finance committee time to do its due diligence on budget recommendations. We talked about a fall special town meeting and the potential articles that are before the board. I have recommended the date of Monday, November 30th, 2020 for a fall special, and I know the board was discussing that. It's certainly not required that it be set in stone tonight. We talked about procurements. And we talked about the 23 Linden parking lot construction project, which I know Dave will go over with the board next week. He has been working on doing a sketch or layout of the parking lot. He's been working with Lynn Sally. He'll give you more details next week. But I informed him that in order for this construction project to be completed by June 30th, 2021, which it's required to be under the grant, they will not extend this grant, we have to be doing the procurement this winter. So we're starting to get going on working on that in earnest. Now, Tolman, the Tolman property. So you all received a draft copy of the Phase 1 environmental site assessment report that was prepared by Fosun O'Neal Engineers. They were the contracted engineers through CMRPC. The report itself does not provide next steps, however, their findings, in my reading of the report, their findings don't appear to be, I don't want to say they're not significant, but they don't rise to the level of, I don't think, moving to a Phase 2 brownfield site assessment, which means that we have to take, we're going to have to be sure to take other measures locally in cleaning up the property. I do want to note that in the report, there were some findings with regard to some contaminants. They identified a number of documented oil releases, abandoned containers of potentially hazardous liquids, and a former railroad right-of-way as potential contaminants on the property. So meanwhile, I have asked Dave Smith, Highway Superintendent, and Facility Superintendent, to line up a vendor who actually does demolition work and will remove structures to get a cost for us on removing the dilapidated structures and, and all the debris on the ground at that property. I had considered the possibility, and I think this might have been discussed earlier, possibility of lining up acetate to do the work. The issue is that there are toxins on the property. There are hazardous substances, and that, that creates a risk for the students. So we are going to go ahead and request an estimate for a professional to come in and clean up the property. Meanwhile, I've contacted the U.S. EPA, a representative that I've been in contact with before, and I'm in contact with the EPA's attorney to talk about town liability with regard to taking this property and how we can mitigate as much liability as, as possible if we proceed with taking the property. So Scott, just to catch you up early on in this process, DEP had been in touch with EPA, and EPA, being a federal regulatory agency, was moving simultaneously along this cleanup path with us, but they could not coordinate with us. They have to do their own thing. They get their own site access. So I want to make sure that they're still working simultaneously with us, because I think the more hands in this, the better off we'll be. Is there any questions on the Tolman report?
Again, the owners of the property are cooperative, for lack of a better term. They're not trying to block.
The, the record owner actually gave the town written permission to access the property at the start of this process. So yes. I think those are the, those are the biggest things. The Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Plan. CMRPC, I, this is, there's a typo in my report, so I just want to clarify. The CMRPC did host a listening session on September 3rd regarding the 80% draft report, and I think Peter Peliquin, who headed up this project, on behalf of CMRPC, did a great job summarizing months of, of work and meetings and things into just over an hour. So we're looking forward to getting that report wrapped up and being eligible for MVP action grants. I think that's all I have at the moment, I hope.
Okay, any, any questions for Margaret?
All right, the, the tax hearing on the 21st?
Yes.
It'll be my first one, but like, how much information are we giving at it, given there? Is there going to be a recommendation for tax rates? Is there going to be an understanding of what, what the mix between commercial and residential and agricultural will, or open space will, will cost us?
To the extent that the assessors actually can provide that information in their presentation, I would ask them to do that. With regard to a recommendation, in last year's tax classification hearing, I provided a recommendation that provided balance between residential and commercial. So there's that 50% margin or shift margin. So I, I presented a recommendation that would not create undue burden on residential or commercial. I don't, I have yet to see the, the numbers for this year, so I can't speak to that yet.
Okay. I just wondering how much we're given a blank slate, and I'm going to sit here with like, you know, 15 spreadsheets and two computers trying to figure things out, or or whether we're going to start with something that's relatively close so that I don't need all that information around me.
It's, it's worth mentioning that the purpose of the tax classification hearing, the primary purpose, is to determine whether the town will receive with a single tax rate or the split tax rates that the town has been doing. So based on that information, okay?
Okay.
Yeah, Margaret, you may not know this. Has anybody else driven around town and seen all the trees with yellow dots? Are those the ones that have been identified by Dave that are like hanging over branches that he's trying to work with? Because I mean, there's one literally like right outside my driveway, a couple across the street, one a little bit up the street. They just like appeared one day. I was just curious as to what they were.
Fortunately, I do not have an answer on that yet. Do you happen to know if all the limbs on those trees are hanging over lines, power lines?
They look at, and that's what I thought that it was. I mean, that, that they're trying to identify those, because the ones, the ones that are marked are dead. They're dead. They've been dead. So that's what I was thinking, was that those were the Engrid trees that he's trying to get them to come in and cut down.
I can only hope that they're making progress with Engrid. I'll look into that, though.
No worries. I mean, when I see them or when I find something to email them about.
Okay. I guess we'll move on to old business. The first thing is, we need to vote on a coffee talk agenda, which I believe was Victoria, Lisa Betcher-Smith, and Chief Galvin. Is that correct, Margaret?
That is correct. That's what I, yes, I think that's what we've discussed so far. Chief Galvin would be discussing the Traffic Safety Advisory Committee, which will have had its first meeting by then.
Right. So if that is okay with you, I guess we could do a motion to approve that agenda.
Is it only going to be those three items? It seems very short, and I don't think a lot of.
I thought there'd be a couple of, at least announcement things added. I mean, I was expecting that we'd say something like, we're looking at a special town meeting coming up this fall to finish the stuff we didn't do at the regular meeting. We could even say we're looking towards the 30th and still getting feedback. It's not been set, but it could get us some feedback on that. I thought we might say something about the timing of the tax bill so that people who need some time to prepare, that we're looking at. So again, it's not formally set, but looking at mid-October, so they'd be due in mid-November. So again, people who might have fiscal constraints can start planning better to know for it. And were we going to say anything about the priorities on the document that we put together?
Yeah, I'd like to talk about our goals and objectives. I mean, we may not have anything settled, but I think that we need to show the town that we're working on other things, because maybe some of their input would push, push one up to the top or something.
Or kill one. I thought they were all pretty good ideas, but like, you know, if there's a concerted effort, because there's some piece of information, all, all five of us are sort of missing here, but.
They're all good ideas.
I've got another thought, too, with this huge election coming up on November 3rd and the early voting and the mail-in voting and the absentee voting. Maybe Eloise or James could attend to speak to everything that's happening with the election.
That would be a good idea. And, and I mean, there was one, an email that was going out about traffic and people not knowing where to park, and Brenda's standing in the middle of the street trying to direct people. So, you know, maybe something could be addressed about that, you know, where to park, how to get in the building, you know, to avoid that.
I mean, I think it'd be great, even if there, if there are some, I wouldn't make something up, but like, we've now done two elections this way. What are the things that we've learned that we're doing even better for, for the general election? You know, because I think there's probably something we are now doing better or different because we've learned something after doing it twice.
The town now has a very popular locked drop box in the front vestibule, and it's highly utilized. So that in itself is.
But you know, Margaret, that's a good point to bring out, because if you read around through Facebook and not so much on Berlin Neighbors Connect, but certain people's posts, they get all wiggy, you know, and they just stir the pot of, oh, my ballot's going to be lost. It's not going to be counted, you know, fraud, fraud. I mean, so if there's any way that James or Eloise could say, hey, you know what, over these past elections, we've had 200 people vote. Because of the mail-in ballots, it has now zipped up to blah, 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 you know? I think you need to install that confidence and safety into the folks to say, fill it out, drive by, open the door, whizz it in, close the door, be done, and oh, by the way, here's the website you can go to to make sure that your ballot was checked in and counted. I did. I checked mine.
Did you?
Yep.
All right. So we've got a running list going. We can probably each speak to some of this stuff.
I think so, and I could even invite the administrative finance team to come and talk about Dennis, in particular, about tax billing, the timing.
Okay. Do we need a vote on this, Margaret?
Well, if you'd like, I'll just reread it for you, and sure, that would be great. Then we can kind of memorialize it. It's Council on Aging Director Victoria Flynn, 1870 Town Hall Manager Lisa Betcher-Smith, Police Chief Galvin regarding the New Traffic and Safety Advisory Committee. Discussion about special town meeting. Discussion about tax bills and the timing of them this fall, and then finally, state election preparation.
Okay. Does that sound good to you all?
We, we dropped our priorities from the list?
Oh, forgot it. So we have. Let's put that last.
Yeah, yes, I agree.
Special town meeting or, or not?
That's here, too, yeah.
All right, so Victoria, Lisa, and Tom for people. Special town meeting, our goals and objectives, discussion on the tax bill, and Eloise and/or James talking about the elections, what we've done, what we've learned, and parking tips.
And board priorities.
Yeah, our goals and objectives.
Oh, goals and objectives, yes, okay.
Okay. Can, do you want me to reach out to Jan or Mary? Can you reach out to Jan to make sure that that gets in the item for next week? Yeah.
We nail down the agenda, I can email it to her direct. I'll also put it up on Facebook, and she usually shares what I put up on Facebook.
I'll get, I'll ask Dave if he can update the blinky sign. And I can ask Lions, Berlin's Lion Club, if they can update the sign in the center of town next to Jane Sawyer's garden.
Okay, sounds like a plan.
Screen drive the agenda on?
What is that?
I said, what screen do I have the agenda on? I have too many tabs open.
All right, so the FY22 budget calendar guide.
I didn't receive any feedback on this. Anybody have any comments, questions?
The same thing I said last time was that they probably should be working with the schools earlier than the, the final vote, but I get that the final vote might happen then. And then Margaret, or likely, it doesn't need to be in the calendar as much as when I was on FinCom, having, finding department heads that were willing to meet with you and had their budgets ready before mid-January was always difficult. So if you, I think if you push the departments a little harder to have them ready, that it doesn't need to be all of them, one or two of them ready in December will make all the difference and be able to pull the whole thing off by the, the timeline you have.
Okay, that sounds good. I gave, last year I gave FinCom, I actually lined up a schedule for them. I gave them a schedule of department head meetings.
You get to do that instead of me, and you get a lot more because you. It's easier to say, no, no, you're going to go this week, you know? I'm just like, please, please come and see us.
Yeah, I'll work with FinCom on that. And I will emphasize that that March 19th date is the deadline, is the the regional agreement deadline, not the date that we'd expect a preliminary budget.
And then same thing, Margaret, for budgets like we did last year. If your timeline is to get it in by X date, and you miss X date, you go flat. You, you don't get to come back a day later and say, oh my God, oh my God, I'm so sorry, I'm so sorry. Our response will be, no, sorry, sorry, not sorry. Your budget last year was $20. Your budget this year is $20.
Okay. I did inform the department heads this morning of the November 27th deadline, and we do have on the calendar, the board starts reviewing and approving the proposed budget on November 30th. So there's very little time between the deadline and when the board starts reviewing. Okay.
All right. Is there anything else on the budget calendar? All right, then we'll move on to the annual town report policy and procedure. I myself thought that the policies and procedures looked fine. Now, is there any other feedback?
Did we ever decide on a, on a software, or Mary, are you still looking into that, or? Where are we with that? Or do we have to decide now?
It's not really my call, but.
Well, I thought that we were considering just using Word this first year.
But Laurie had written back and said that Word unfortunately really isn't one that you can
Right.
lay out. I mean, it can do a great table of contents, but.
I don't know if our policies and procedures need to outline what software we're using, because software could vary from day to day based on the person who's putting it together. I think the person doing it together might have, I mean, if, if someone likes a, you know, obscure European piece of software, if they're doing it all from top to bottom, it can get us at the end a format that's a universal format, we might not care as much.
Too many versions and too many exotic versions, and even Adobe, the full-loaded version that Laurie uses, that it's going to be hard sharing it with other people for feedback and to review it. Everyone doesn't have a licensed copy of the same, I think.
No, but if you save even from Adobe, you save it as a standard PDF that's not editable by others, because you don't necessarily want them to be editing it. They want them providing the feedback. That's, that is more universally readable.
I'm totally, I'm down with learning Adobe, but I don't know how to do it, but I will learn it, and I would be interested in doing it. But there's going to be a ramp-up time. I just don't touch it a lot, but that doesn't mean that I can't force myself to do it more. I, I can do it. do it more. I, I, I can do it if you want.
I thought all of the, many of the towns use Word, that's why I said that.
But that was like, ten respondents, but yes.
Right, and many of those towns don't end up getting awards for how nice theirs looks, so.
Well, the good thing would be that Laurie would be there as a safety net if we've got that version of the software, I suppose.
Mm-hmm.
You know, because she does know her way around so well.
Mm-hmm. I wonder if she'd be willing to come in, I mean, if, if, you know, if the board chooses to go this route, and, and I agree with Scott 100%, do not write a software into the policy and procedure, oh, boy.
Right, right.
But, um, you know, maybe if the board decides to go that route, maybe have Laurie come in and sit with you once, once we do get a license and get it up and running.
I'm good with that.
I know she's willing to still work with Mary to do this, so.
I also think that what, if we had the Adobe credit, we would find, I mean, we do a lot of flyers and notices and other stuff that you, you'll slowly find her using it.
We or I will start doing flyers.
Right, right.
It's not going to be married to my motherboard, so it would be, I'm now type-setting.
Right, and, and Adobe actually is cloud-based, so that it makes it easier to, to, to share between users with licenses if you're doing editing, and so they're likely more than one license to get it out there, but it is, it is, it is, you're right, it's not at least tied to your computer, and you could use it both potentially at home and at work, or, or if other one of us got involved in it. I, I know only little about it, and I just only know how it's licensed, because I've had to sign off on a couple of things at work, because that's what we use for all of our flyers and posters and stuff.
I don't think we ever really asked CM Geeks, Margaret, about how to procure it. They would probably get it, I guess, or.
Oh, yeah, Travis could give us some information, sure.
I'll ask him.
The, the only thing that I still think is missing from the policy is the date range of the report.
Okay.
I, I keep reading this, and I don't see in it that, that the report shall cover January 1st to December 31st of the previous year.
All right, so maybe further, I'm sorry, go ahead, Chris.
I just, I, I thought I did see something in there.
It's the second bullet, but maybe it needs to be clearer.
Or the preceding calendar year, yes.
That's right.
Because there's so many dates in this thing, and I keep scanning to try to find a January 1st, December 31st, but.
Oh, well, say that, that's, you're right.
You could say, Jan, we could say preceding calendar year, January 1 to December 31.
Yep.
Right.
And then the same policy would go, if it's due on X date, and you don't get it in by X date, Mary is not going to be the chaser of X report.
Decide.
Yeah, we'd have to decide that, because if it's not published, then it has to be an agenda item at town meeting, and so that will be the tear we have, is, so when it comes a week later, are we going to force them to present it at town meeting and take up town meeting time?
These, these always go to press late because we're waiting for late stuff, and sometimes it's Finance Committee, that's, that's logical, that's.
Yeah, Finance Committee generally should be last, yes, but.
But nobody else should be last.
Right.
No one should be late.
And maybe we do have to shame them in front of this, we wouldn't have to have this agenda item if this was gotten in on time, but here's the department that didn't get their report in on time presenting their report.
It's, it's actually not statutorily required that the late town, uh, annual town report reports be submitted at town meeting. The town meeting agenda items to hear reports of boards and committees, it's not necessarily to hear annual town reports.
Oh, good.
I'm just throwing that out there.
So they're not the report.
Yep.
The town bylaw says if you don't report annually, then you cease to exist as a committee.
Well, then, you know what, that needs, to me, that needs to go into the email, you know, the reminder, and, you know?
Make sure the select board gets ours in on time, because if we cease to exist as a, as a committee, then there's some problems with this town.
This, the select board needs latitude here, and that's why I put that last bullet in there. You can make a decision as to what to do with them.
Okay.
It's one of those, if it's really only an exceptional, like, it happens only every now and then, you know, then it's easy to grant those, if it's like a third of them every year, then you don't ever want to make it, but you know.
Who was, what were we waiting on last year? I, I don't remember waiting on too much of anything.
Historical.
Governor.
Well, yeah, that, too.
Historical, I think, was late, rec, I think, was late, there were a few other ones that we were chasing.
Yep.
This will help, this will help provide real parameters for.
Does that mean I better start one tomorrow?
Yes, it does.
Oh, boy.
There you go, Madam Chair.
Yeah. All right, well, I think you've got the feedback from all of us, Margaret, is that?
Again, something we need to vote on, or is it something that?
You adopt the policy.
Are we ready to adopt?
Well, we decided on all three items, we, we, we decided on all three things, Coffee Talk, the Budget Calendar, and the Annual Town Report Policy and Procedure. Do I hear a so moved to approve them all?
Peg, because she's raising her hand.
So moved, there we go.
I will second.
Okay, and we'll take a vote. Tea, five?
Stone eye.
Hawkins eye.
Woo-hoo, okay, so right after calendar year, we will clarify, January 1 to December 31, and that will be final.
Okay. And we'll move on to discuss the Fall 2020 Special Town Meeting.
Okay, so I have updated, I've given the board the list a few times now of potential special town meeting articles. On this version, those that I have struck through, I'm not recommending that they be presented at special town meeting for various reasons. For example, the air handler replacement, that is an air conditioning unit that Dave has said could wait until the annual town meeting in the spring. Not only that, it is, it, it far missed the capital request submission timeline for FY21. The entire list of non-vetted list of possible articles I have struck through because they're either not, um, prepared at this point, or they, for whatever reason, they haven't been fully vetted, fully discussed. So for example, taxing and regulating short-term rentals, that's the Airbnb tax. I think that's something that's going to need more significant community discussion about whether the town wants to proceed with this. Not only that, right now with COVID, the revenues would be extremely minimal, I think, so I, I believe that's something that can wait.
I think probably both of those items, because I, I had those as questions for you as to why they were crossed off.
Which one?
The air handler and the short-term rentals.
Yep, oh, isn't that something?
Yeah, I might suggest that, just that at some point, before we bring them to a town meeting, that we have a discussion on, you know, or.
Sure.
Information on those.
Sure.
What I don't see in this list is, never mind, I do see in this list. I just have to reread it a second time.
Oh, there's an awful lot, there's an awful lot, as is.
The special legislation for regional, I believe there's the school agreement between Berlin and Boils, so I hope I have some adjustments needed, but. And so that's, all that's, all that's seen is covered in one line in this, in this report, that's why I was expecting something more verbose, because I keep hearing things, oh, we should change this, and we should change that.
Oh, no, this one is really just to deal with the first school committee election, only the first school committee election, not to change the regional agreement yet, however, topic for a future town meeting, right?
Do you think maybe we need to give the administration and the school committee a heads up that we have some concerns?
Yeah, we should.
Okay.
I have those noted from your last meeting.
Okay. All right. Did you want approval of this, or just sharing at this point?
Oh, no, I'm just sharing at this point, yeah, within the next couple of weeks, I'll start putting, unless the board, um, opposes, you know, strongly opposes putting any of these on, I'm, I will go ahead and proceed with drafting warrant articles on each, so the language, you'll start seeing the, the warrant article language over the next few meetings.
I, I was just questioning, you know, about the air handler, whether it was something we needed to do sooner rather than later.
As an emergency capital request, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, if.
I, I, I wouldn't mind having a special town meeting, at least right now, having an article for the air handler that had a period of money that we might amend at general town meeting if they don't need it by May, but if that is really nearing end of life, and there could be specials in the January, February timeframe for air handlers that's not available in the summertime, and everyone's trying to fix their, and replace their handling systems.
Good point. I can ask Dave to, I can ask Dave to get that written request in, and we can do a capital request submission for the current fiscal year to see, let it, let it be run by the CPC.
Okay.
Margaret, I have a question. What if we decide on the distribution of the annual town reports? I know that there was some discussion that we were gonna print some, mail some, leave some around for people to pick up, go put on the web, totally darned a blank with that one.
Okay, so that's showing under general bylaw amendments on the list?
Yes.
Um, I, I, I understand that an article had been presented at a town meeting, it was before I started, but I have also drafted some language for that. Um, with the town meeting discussion at Coffee Talk, I wonder if, you know, the board would be interested, this affects all residents, the distribution of the annual town reports, and I wonder if there's any way that we can get a sense from residents as to how they feel about changing the way they're made available. And I'm not talking just solely on our website, I'm talking about making them available in hard copy upon request, putting them at the post office, putting them over at the library, but not necessarily mailing to every single voting household, that list continues to grow. So I guess I'd like the board's thoughts on how to proceed with that to, to get the community's feedback.
I think the biggest one that we avoided this year was getting it out, you know, and getting it in people's hands before 15 minutes before the meeting, that was always the town's biggest gripe, is, you give me these, I mean, this past one was a little bit different because it was tiny, but when you have 40-some-odd articles that you have to go through, and some people like to take the time to read them and research them, that before, they were like literally getting them a couple days before the town meeting, but, I mean, this year, we did much, much better, and people had time, so I think that was the largest complaint, is getting them out there when we say that we were getting them out there.
Well, you know, it might be interesting to hear from people if they want to change the way that.
Yeah.
Uh, it's distributed or not. We don't know, you know, from the general public.
Right.
We have ways.
Could it be in the tax bill? Could it be a little tear-off sheet that people return to the selectmen's office? Do you still want to get the paper book or not?
We could do that, I mean, there are ways that we can do surveys, we can ask very simple question, you know, surveys by the website, so I think we, we have some options, and yes, I could put something in the, in the tax bill.
That might be the best way, only because it does reach everyone.
Yeah.
A lot of people, you know.
Except for the tenants in town.
Except for what?
Tenants.
Yeah, and you know what, so, I mean, Mary, so then, you know, you take that, and maybe we write up a little ditty and we stick it into the item, you know, so people who read the item, maybe we write up a little ditty and we stick it at the post office, I don't know.
Or on the website.
Yeah, on the website, at the dump, you can't go near six feet near each other, but you know.
Facebook.
Yeah, Facebook, I mean, there's ways to get it, I'll.
Okay.
19 Carter, but, yeah, no, I agree that we should ask the town peeps if they still want it.
All right. All right, so I've made note of that, we'll, Mary, you and I could put something together to figure out how we get the word out on that, in addition to the tax bills.
Okay.
Do we think this town meeting agenda is getting to the point where it should be two nights?
Bylaws one night and everything else the other?
There's one, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight things on just zoning bylaws?
Do you think they're going to go forward with all of those, Margaret?
Um. Most, yes, I think they're going to go forward with most, plus the scenic roads act, an amendment to the scenic roads act, so, um, yeah, I think these, these are.
Well, I know some of them have been waiting for a while, so.
Right, and I know that every, anytime in this town, we talk about in-law apartments or home-based contracting businesses, you're, you're going to end up with long debates and discussions as a general rule. And then, have we ever had the word marijuana on any agenda item and not have it be relatively wrong?
So I, I do think they're coming forward, and I, I think that's legit, I think we have to, we have to first figure out the venue, we're going to have to determine which venue we're going to use. Um, our bylaws allow us to use Asabet, Tejant, or Berlin Memorial, so, you know, we'll have to think about where best to have it.
Right, and splitting into two nights is one of those things that, when we see the final sort of list, is probably the easier time to do it, because right now, some of these could disappear, so there could be 17 more, so it becomes way more obvious that we need more than one night.
Yeah, how many, how many are there, after you take out the ones that you don't recommend?
Oh, a lot. A lot. I didn't, I didn't, I should have numbered them instead of bulleted them, there's a lot.
Okay, well, I mean, we can look at it at another, you know, at another meeting, too.
And I'll number them that time, so we can at least.
Okay.
Hey, not to, not to skip backwards, but on the Coffee Talk, Margaret, can you add just like a quick blip on what's going on with the library? I mean, all our other ones, we've always included like a five-minute ditty.
Library septic thing?
Yeah. Yes, I will.
Hopefully, there'll be a little bit more to update, maybe, I don't know.
Well, let's see, the 17th, oh, yes, the IFB will have been reissued, that's for one.
Okay.
And if we do two nights, then we'll have, we should probably look into, again, babysitting options, you know, so parents can, parents can come, and maybe we can try to lump, like, parent things together, you know, so they can get in and get out before nine or something like that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, through the chair, at the board's last meeting, you were discussing day of the week, so where, what would you like us to look into as far as, um, reserving a venue, or what do you think, what dates do you think we should do?
At this point, I still like Monday, Tuesday, Monday as the meeting, Tuesday's an overflow, and I don't know how we, I'll ask around, and others can, but like, would you prefer a meeting go from 7:00 to 11:00 and be one night, or two nights of 7:00 to 9:00? Yeah, obviously, you go into, hit the agenda cutoff point, but I mean, it'd be interesting to see what people would be more interested in.
Question for Coffee Talk.
Yeah, could be. We could just throw it out there.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Yeah, because once we have those dates, we can really start looking at, at booking appropriate venues, so, the appropriate venue.
Yeah, I mean, there's also a lot, a lot of things that could change between now and then as far as the COVID, too.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
So, I know we have a, a lot of options, I think there's a lot of older people who may just prefer to go to the usual place.
Right.
We had initially.
Go ahead, Margaret, sorry.
Oh, no, we had initially started, we had initially talked about that early in the annual town meeting planning process, and using multiple rooms. The only thing with the fall town meeting is that school will be in session then, so the rooms will have to be disinfected after and, and everything, but we'll talk to, we'll talk to the school and, and see what we can do.
Will we be able to use the Council on Aging van to pick people up?
Right now, the, it would be, it's got very limited capacity, I don't know what it's going to be like at the end of November. If, if the situation allows us to put more people in, there'll be fewer trips going back and forth. Otherwise, if, if someone wants to go, um, we'd have to do multiple trips to and from.
Yeah.
We're only servicing it, what, one person per ride?
Two, two people per ride.
Holy crap, you'd have to start at 4:00 in the afternoon.
Yeah. Yeah. Sorry, did you, if you wanted to eat your dinner at 5:00, you don't have to skip it.
No, you gotta bring it, bring it.
And then at the end of town meeting, you, there's going to be a line waiting for your ride home.
So they'll be there till 11:00 anyway.
Oh, that's awful. Well, Chris, you know, you have an SUV, I have an SUV, well, we can just throw one in the back, in the back, back, we can take some people home.
I have a motorcycle, just have someone.
There you go.
My SUV is tiny.
Bigger than my motorcycle.
All right. All right. Um, well, we have no new business. Um, do we have any board questions and comments? Or did we ask them all already?
I did always ask mine during Margaret's presentation.
Yeah, me too.
And I've been filling up email with mine, so I'm good.
I do want to note, if, if I could through the chair, just one thing, um, I, I know that there have been questions about, um, bottled water at Northbrook Village too. Um, and I, I, I informed the board a little while ago today. I did get a call back, uh, from DEP, so I understand where DEP is, uh, with this. Uh, my hope is that the email, um, that was sent inquiring about the bottled, uh, water use will prompt some action, um, by uh, the property managers to get a, um, a water treatment permit application into DEP so they can review it and, and make some progress.
Yeah, let us know if we need to do anything further.
Mm-hmm.
And I just want to send out, uh, a shout out to Chief Clark and Lieutenant Polino. I was approached by one of the seniors in town who said, oh, I need my smoke detector batteries replaced. Who can help me? And, uh, so I put in an email to Chief on a, I don't know, Sunday night and, uh, Monday, the, uh, Fire Department was up there changing out batteries. So thank you very much to Chief Clark and his crew for continuing to take care of the seniors in our town. Appreciate it.
Very good.
Yep. Thank you, Chief. Um, well, if we're, no more comments and questions, then we do have need for a short executive session um, pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A7 to revert, review and approve executive session meeting minutes of July 13th, 2020 and July 20th, 2020. So.
You'll adjourn.
I'm sorry, yes. And we'll, we will only return to open session to adjourn. Um, so would take a roll call vote, um, would be Keefe eye?
Stone eye.
Hawkins eye.
All right.